Hello, hello.
Oh, I'm working. Are you pressing the gray button?
I'm on. All right, I got power.
Okay.
Oh, somebody turned the mic off.
Yeah.
Guess we gotta be smarter than that technology.
I guess so.
There. That's okay. Mine's working. Okay, let's start over. Good evening, I'd like to call the Ferrisburg City Council Meeting Order. Monday, February 20th, 7:00 PM, Ferrisburg City Hall. Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Seias. Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Murdoch. Councilmember Kate.
Here.
Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Kate, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the day now passed and all the blessings you give to us. We ask now your guidance and direction for this evening, for all that we decide here and now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Number five, public comments. This time on the agenda is for any citizen to direct brief comments or questions to the city council. Time for public comments will be given when an agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand and be recognized by the mayor, and after being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please.
Please, Royce, 17700 in Aboh. I'm glad to see that the introduction for the ethics ordinance is there. Because I was thoroughly shocked when I was sitting in Spain watching what happened to our Ottawa County commissioners. Complete ugher nightmare.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, I just, I could not believe you talked about an open meetings act violation. I mean, you can't do the stuff that those people did at that meeting without get together beforehand. And I think we need new ethics rules all the way around the board. I, I just, I'm astonished, I'm ashamed. I'm lifelong Ottawa County. Yeah, I mean, the meeting that I went to when I came back from Spain, I thought it was at church, actually, because everybody there was... I mean, there is a separation of church and state, and it should be there for a reason. So, I'm glad to see this is on there, because I hope city council here watches and takes a close look at what's happening, because it's shocking. I have a question on new business with the MML. I don't understand why two people need to go. I guess the only good thing about COVID was everybody learned how to do stuff online and save the taxpayers some money. So I'm just kind of wondering why we need two people to go to that. And I know that there's been people in the past that have done it online. So I'm, you know, taxpayer dollars, they just had in the newspaper today that Ottawa County's raising, what, 5% now? It's the max, is that not right, Craig? For taxes, so, you know, we need to button it up a little bit. So, and I'm, I'm just glad to see, you know, the ethics ordinance be up there, because it's truly needed. Thank you.
One thing. There in line with our... That works with church and state.
Gordon, come on up.
I had to bring notes, so I would remember what I wanted to say. Gordon Gallagher, Spring Lake Township manager. I know many of you, most of you, but some are new faces since the last time I was here. Richard and I, we were just reminded that we went to Community College in Potawatka 40 years ago, so some relationship's longer than others. But I really wanted just to mention how much Spring Lake Township appreciates the relationship that we have with Ferrisburg. We do a lot of things collaboratively in Northwest Ottawa County between our water system, our sewer system. We, a significant amount of not just mutual aid from an emergency response, but automatic aid. Where our fire departments for a structured fire are automatically paged to each other's events. We work with Harbor Transit, our public works departments. When, when COVID was coming along, especially early on, we weren't sure whether people were going to have to be home or not, or separating people. And, and our public works departments communicated quite a bit as far as if people needed staff somewhere. We had a, I don't remember whether it was a sewer collapse on Van Wagner and the township, and worked with the city to help with barricades, and that might be going back five years now, but it seems like... I just, I really just wanted to say thank you. We're, we're continuing to work on our police and fire capacity to make sure that, that we will have the kind of partnership that, that we can bring to the table to, to just be good neighbors. So, thank you. That was my whole list. Absolutely, yep, yep, yep. It's just tucked way in there, so... Oh, that's good, yeah. Nope, good. Thank you.
Okay, any more public comments? Hearing none, moving on. Six, consideration for approval of consent agenda. Six A, approve the February 6, 2023 city council meeting minutes as printed. B, adopt a resolution adopting the 2022 regional hazard mitigation plan. Six C, approve city bank accounts access resolution for depository investment services with Flagstar Bank, JP Morgan Comerica. I did see a typo on seven F. It should read March 6, 2023. February 6 has already passed. Yes? Do I have a motion? Motion and support, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, seven A, new business. Discussion, take action if appropriate to approve a recommendation from the Recreation Commission to approve a proposal from PM Blau Inc. For $2,000 to assist with a grant application for Fire Barn Park.
Does this, all right. So this is redoing our grant for the trust fund grant. We need to update the costs and engineering costs and, and all of that for next year's grant. And we, we can't submit without having those updated costs.
Is there any idea on what kind of grants we're going to be applying for next year? Because I know we have a problem with federal grants, is it... So, any idea on that?
That's the, the plan, is, is hoping to have that remediated prior to the submission of that grant. Or at least be able to go in and explain that we are working towards the resolution of that issue. But yes, if, if we, I, I would say that if we do nothing and have no intent of doing anything, then it's probably not worth doing, pushing the grant forward. But because we're working diligently on it, and Craig's spending a lot of time on it, and we're hoping to have a resolution, where the Rec Commission is recommending that we move forward with this grant in the hopes of getting the funding. We've already done significant fundraising with the community. We've raised quite a bit of money towards our match. This is the next step. I mean, hopefully we get Spark Grant, right, and, and win the next rounds. But we, we need to plan for everything.
Well, I've seen something, one of the Spark Grants was, was denied. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
The only problem I have with this is you gotta do a lot of work.
Am I on? I guess the only problem I have with this is we have to do a lot of work as a council before we can even, in my opinion, apply for another federal grant. I mean, I don't think excuses are going to make a difference to them. With what we've done in the past, then we need to be, you know, make reprimands for that. And I, I don't know that this is really the way to go. It seems like we're putting the horse before the carriage here.
The grant would be for 2024, correct, Craig? Or it'd submit? For the 2024 award.
And awards would be in December of 2023.
2023, okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig, what, what's going to be different this time compared to the last three or four grant applications? To get a different outcome?
Yeah, last year we put a, a grant application for the trust fund for the improvements at Fire Barn Park. We didn't score as well as we liked, because we had the 50-point deduct for the conversion issue we have with the property at the Fire Barn Station. So, we're working to try to mitigate that issue. If we can show good faith, we can make our case to the board that we're working on this, and they have the prerogative to waive that 50 points. Resolving this issue.
Yes.
Okay. I did some research, I had Craig send me a copy, which I, everybody here, I left on your desk in front of you. These are the grants. What we paid out to PM Blau. Over the last year and a half, we have authorized $10,000 to PM Blau for grant writing, and we have received no grants or money in return. Under the Fire Barn Grant, if you see the, under the paid, the total was, out of $4,000, $3,653.75 was paid, leaving a difference of $346.25. The Spark Grant, $6,000 was approved. And paid out was $6,750, which is an overpayment of $750, which was authorized by the city council. Total paid out is $10,403.75. This is an application, we want to give another, to give another $2,000 for a grant we already authorized payment for, for $2,000. There is $346 left for the Fire Barn, the $4,000 that was authorized for the Fire Barn Grant. The... Hopefully they'll, they'll notice the overpayment and send us a check for $750, that would be nice. But the, there's, the, there is $346.25, and that is what I think they, they should, it should be able to work with in updating the grant for resubmission. This really is not a whole lot to do. At this time, I would like to not approve a, the recommendation from the Recreation Committee to, from the totals for PM Blau for $2,000 to assist with the grant application for Fire Barn Park.
Your Honor, Craig, when is this grant due by? By April, did you say?
April 1st.
April 1st.
$346 isn't enough for a firm to do anything for us.
Your Honor, they haven't done anything for us yet. We have, we have got no results from, from the money, and we're, we're going to be like the federal government and just continue throwing money after, after bed.
I mean, I could say the same thing about your trips to Capcom and different things, Tim. The, the point is, we're, we're paying for a service, we receive the service, it's, it's, it's not... She can't decide on the grant for us, right? All she does is write the grant with the input that we give her. She's been successful for other communities. Ferrisburg has a different demographic that, you know, wasn't appealing to our, our grant approvers. But we've gotten, to say we've gotten nothing, I think is a little misleading, because we've got, you know, four, four grant requests through her firm, and, and we still have two pending. So, we don't know yet if we, we, we have two rounds pending of three grants. So we don't know that we haven't gotten anything yet.
Right, and I did talk to Pam about her quote, and she mentioned to me that when she did her first proposal to the city for the $24, $2700 for their first grant for the trust fund, that she did give the city a discount. And so that's why the $2,000 is, is close to what she charges the first time, because the first round was discounted.
Your Honor, yeah, I don't think this is PM Blau's problem in the least. I, I don't put any blame on, on our, our grant writer. It's, it's basically until we acquire some land to make up for the difference of what we misuse the land for in Coast Guard Park, or in Fire Barn Park now, I, I just don't see a reason for moving forward. I just, I don't know. And it's nothing to do with PM Blau, it's just a situation that we find ourselves in.
Part of the Rec Commission's conversation was that we didn't want to lose steam on our fundraising that we've been doing. We've had a lot of community members donate significant amounts of money, and then for us to turn around and say, "Well, thanks for the money, but we're done applying for grants right now," is hurtful, right? And it sends a bad message. I, I'm, I'm optimistic that Craig and his city staff can, can find a solution for the land issue. I know we're talking about that later tonight. Is it, Craig, should we table this until after our conversation later tonight?
You could do that, sure.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to table this until, we'll make it letter J, I guess?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and support to table it. Till after our discussion, to move into seven J, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven B, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve the expenditure, expenditure of Mayor Belize to attend the Michigan Municipal League MML Cap Conference. That's in April, I believe.
Your Honor, if I may, answer the question as to why we, two people, when one might do or a nun, or we can do this online. There's stuff that you cannot do online, you cannot network, you cannot get information from other municipal leaders, which is, which helps out a lot with making decisions, when, when it comes to making decisions up here. There's also training that goes on that you can't get online. And more training, the better. The other thing is, it gets us out there, the face of Ferrisburg, gets, we get out there and known to other municipalities around the state. And I have made quite a few friends and contacts in other, other cities. They've given me some good ideas of what to do, and I've also helped them out with the same thing. That's why this is important to do, is get out there. We can't be isolationist. We need to get the Ferrisburg message out there.
What is the total estimated cost to a city for one person?
$325 plus mileage.
I'm just going for the day.
So the mayor would be $325 plus mileage and food?
I've asked before, but do we have a plan for when we go there? Is there city business that you're looking at conducting? Is there a certain panel? Is there a certain training that you're going there that you feel specifically will help out the city? Or are you just attending and being hopeful?
A little bit of both. There's breakout sessions, there's seminars on that day. I believe I'm going to attend Wednesday. I would like to do that day. Just go dry for the day and then come back. But I think, I can look up the specific breakout sessions, I can't recall what they were. But, yeah, I haven't attended a MML event in a while, so I think it would be a good idea. And they always have really good resources, it's a good networking with our legislatures there also. But, yeah, if you want further information, I can bring what exactly I'll attend and what value I can bring back to the council.
I'd feel more comfortable voting if I had some idea of what the plan was. Does it need to be approved tonight?
Registration's March 13th deadline.
When was this announced?
Two or three weeks ago.
So, like, before our last meeting?
Your Honor.
Yeah.
Craig, is this a budgeted item?
There's a bu...
Very good. I, I move that we approve the expenditure for the mayor to, to attend the Michigan Municipal League Capcom Conference. Support.
We have a motion, support, further discussion? I'll abstain myself from the vote. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, seven C, discussion, take action if appropriate to approve the expenditure of Mayor Proton O'Donnell to attend the Michigan Municipal League MML Cap Conference.
Your Honor, I have a question. Is there a way that we could, you guys could carpool? And, Tim, do you have to go both nights?
Yes. Both days, yes. And, and the...
Yes, you can carpool, or yes, you have to go both days?
Yes, I, I need to go down there both days. I will be meeting with Representative Van, I want to get his name right, Van Work, Workham, yes. I will be, I, I have a scheduled meeting with him Tuesday morning. We will be discussing some issues that will definitely affect the city, or could have effect on the city at a future time. They include public, funding for public safety, retention, recruitment, hiring, mental health. It happens to be that, that our representative happens to be on the boards to introduce those issues, or has, it has the capability of issuing... There we go. Small ta, small business tax breaks, grants. Yeah, so that, that would be the, the three big things, and there's also a couple other issues that Michigan, that MML also likes to, looking at, wanting us to talk to our representatives about. But there is right now, our public safety is in dest, is in dire straits. The, we do not have enough personnel to cover all the spots that are open. The police recruiting is way down. The other night, we had one ambulance to cover the, the county, because they did not have enough staffing for, for the, to man all, all the ambulances. So, I'll be discussing some issues that hopefully they can come up with a way to encourage people to get into the public safety field. So, that, that's why I go down there the day before. In the morning, I'm going to be meeting with the representative and senators to discuss that stuff, and then the course of meeting on the next day.
Tim, my concern with this is, other than public safety, mental health, and what with tax breaks, I mean, that really doesn't have much to do with the city, other than property tax breaks, but I don't see that happening soon. So, I, I don't know, I just, I fail to see the importance of this. Mental health is a county action, basically, state, county. I mean, the city really doesn't do much with mental health. I understand that you're in that field, but, you know, this is a personal trip.
Okay, I, I realize this is not for a... this is not for myself, this is for our community. That, that's, that's who I'm going down there to represent, is our, is our community.
I just failed to see how you're doing that by talking about things that don't involve the city. That's like going there to talk about the school system. I mean, what do we have to do with the school system? What do we have to do with mental health? Basically, nothing, it's out of our hands, it's above us.
Oh, yes.
This is Royce one seven seven zero zero Navajo. I understand, um, you know, not being able to hire police and not having enough ambulance is a concern for the city, but they're private entities, that's capitalism. They're, they're not, maybe not paying enough people the right amount of money. I don't see where the city can really do that when it's private industry needing to promote those kind of things. And you're talking about taxpayer dollars to do something that you guys can't control, kind of like what you said. I mean, it, it should be a concern to us all if we don't have enough of that, but I, I don't see where getting out there is, is going to do that at, at, at this level. That would be more like, you know, getting Grand Haven, Spring Lake, Ferrisburg, and all of the, the fire department and the, the hospitals and stuff together to, to, to figure that out. I think it, it, that's not quite there. I'm sorry, I just don't see where, I mean, I may be sending one representative for the day if Tim wants to go one day and Scott goes the next, or carpool and go together to see what you can do. But I don't see the need, I think it's kind of double dipping on the whole thing. It's taxpayer money that we need to take care of.
Okay, to, to address that issue, uh, this is, this is an issue that has to be addressed at the state level. It's not a private enterprise, uh, issue. Mental health has to be addressed at the state issue. It is, uh, extremely important that we, we have, uh, things go on. And right now, you have people out in the streets that have mental issues, they have no place to go. Uh, I am constantly, uh, taking people out of state because there are no, no places, no treatment facilities in the state of Michigan that, that, they're awful. The other thing is, uh, the, the, uh, there are regulations that are, that need to be changed. Right now, just let you know, I just found this out, uh, and for billing purposes, I'm considered the same as an oxygen tank. I am a commodity. And that needs to be, that, for, for billing purposes, that needs to be changed. So, that's, and that can only be done at the state level under the, for the state laws. And the more people we get in the public safety, the, the better and safer our community will be. And that is my, my primary, uh, goal, is the, the safety and the well-being of this community. And I have represented the, the city for the last seven years, and.
Your honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to deny, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's, O'Donnell's attendance to, or, uh, approve the expenditure of Tim O'Donnell for the Michigan Municipal League co-con, uh, conference. Is that clear, or you want me to restate that?
No, forgot it. Is there any support on Jerry's motion?
Support.
Motion and support, further discussion? Um, I think, it's a valuable, uh, conference to go to, and I think, Tim, there's going to be different breakout sessions or, uh, seminars on Tuesday as opposed to when I'm going on Wednesday. And then even if he is there on Wednesday, we will go to different, uh, seminars also. So that's, that's my input on that. And so I see value in him also going to.
I guess my concern is that we're spending significant, you know, we're spending tax dollar money to just show off and network. And, uh, you know, if I'm going to support these, I, I see the value in, in going to these conferences. But I would like to see some sort of a plan as to, you know, these are the trainings or conferences that, that we want to attend, and this is how it benefits the city. And then we can, you know, look at our taxpayers and explain to them the benefit of this, uh, instead of just having to explain that, you know, yes, he's going on a trip, and yes, we approved it, but I don't know what he's going to do other than network. And attend various trainings or conferences, or trainings or, or seminars. I just, I, I'd like us to go into some sort of a plan.
Your honor.
Yeah.
Sorry, my mic was off. One cannot discount the value of networking, and, uh, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem has outlined, um, I feel some worthy, uh, contacts as you're going to be making with state rep Ben Workum, and potentially others. And so I, I do see value in going to the conference.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we in a motion? Oh, come on up.
Rebecca Hat, P O Box eighty-five, Ferrisburg four nine four oh nine. Um, as former mayor and president of multiple state boards, MML is a valuable source for anyone to attend, whether it be newly elected officials like Councilmember Montgomery attended with me when you were first elected, and you did have valuable information you received. People are asking what is going to be held there. Each of you would have received your review magazine, and then that review magazine speaks directly about the Capitol Conference, what is available and what is outlined. So these questions that you're asking either the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem specifically of what it's there, there's a whole long list of breakout sessions that are available. And generally, when we would go in the past, you would divide and conquer, that you would look, whoever I would be traveling with, we would decide what we were going to go to, so neither one of us would double up on it. So you would both gather information to bring back to the city. So I really, and I know that in the past, it's been a budgeted item, this council has changed it to only two hundred dollar maximum without asking permission. I seriously can, would encourage this council to support both of these individuals of going and representing Ferrisburg at the state level.
Thank you. Further discussion? There is a motion and support to not approve Tim O'Donnell to go. Uh, could we get a roll call vote for this, please?
Councilmember Carlson?
No.
Councilmember Montgomery? Councilmember Sias? Councilmember Murdock?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate? Councilmember O'Donnell? Mayor Ble, or Mayor Belize?
Uh, no. So the motion carried, forwarded to. Okay, moving on.
Your honor.
Yes.
If I just, uh, say one thing, um, I will, I will still go down, uh, even though it's on my own dime, uh, to meet with the representatives on behalf of the city.
Okay. Uh, seven D, introduction of ordinance number three two six, an ethics ordinance, Craig?
So city council has discussed this ordinance at a couple, at the last meeting, it was a work session item. Uh, city council, uh, asked that the social media policy be included in this, uh, ethics ordinance. I reviewed that with city attorney, Bissinette, and he agreed that it should be, uh, in the ordinance, so we inserted that, and he had his comments, uh, that was included in your packet.
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that we accept, um, City of Ferrisburg ordinance, uh, number three two six draft. Introduction, sorry.
Yep.
I apologize.
Okay.
Your honor.
Yes.
Uh, I have a, a question for Craig. Uh, Craig, Brook's concern is that if we do a, uh, ordinance, it's going to, it, it could get expensive. But he, he also felt that our, our policy currently, um, could have teeth to it and would recommend adding a social media policy, is, is that what he's saying?
No, he indicated that this ethics ordinance does have some bite to it.
Okay, okay.
Including the social media in the ordinance would have the same effect, it would have more effect.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Your honor, I have a question for Craig. Um, was it your interpretation from Brook's comment, Craig, that there would be a, uh, a rush on ethics complaints? I mean, why does he think this is going to be expensive for the city? I mean, you just.
Greg, we've already had expenses because of frivolous complaints already, correct?
Yes, we have.
Your honor.
Yes.
Um, I think we need to, uh, table this, uh, introduction. Uh, we have a substantial, uh, amendment that has been inserted into a, uh, into this ordinance, has neither been discussed nor approved by the city council. Uh, it needs to be, uh, it should be vetted. The other thing, um, is, uh, that, uh, there's, uh, there, those who say that, that the person or person who oppose an ordinance such as this is done out of fear. That is not. That is if they have done something wrong, they should not oppose the ordinance. I oppose this ordinance as written, not out of fear for myself, but out of the fear that it will be used as a weapon against a person or persons, by persons or a group of people who do not like, that, who they do not like or oppose. Regina Solberg stated that very fact in the last meeting, that she wanted to use this, if somebody was convicted, uh, and that would be going to court, you are convicted, uh, of wrongdoing, that they would use it against them if they ran for office in the future. That's your weapon right there. This, this is, uh, ordinance allows the court's authority, regardless of severity of the violation, allows the attorney, one person, the right to determine the employment status of any employee in the city of Ferrisburg. It's too broad that we need to just, if we have, want to have, and you, and you have to have, uh, a punishment, but going to court other than the, above and that's already in, on the books, we need to determine what will go to court and what will stay in the city. With the social media, uh, with the social media addition, somebody who, uh, makes an innocent mistake on the computer, opens an email, and it creates, brings in a virus to the computer, can be taken to court and fined five hundred dollars for a mis, an innocent mistake by clicking the wrong button. We need, uh, it also takes out of the hands of the city manager and department heads disciplinary action. And ninety-nine percent of what is done is not intentionally done, and it should be left to the department heads, not one person, whether this goes to court or not. In the past, what we have, uh, done, that we have dealt with these issues in the past, they have not cost the city money because it did not go to court. It did not go before the city attorney, it came before the city council, and the city council looked at the issue, determined the facts, and made the decision. It has worked for sixty years, and I think that's the way it should remain. So I, I oppose the, uh, introduction of the, this, uh, bill, and I think we should all put it on another session so we can discuss it more in depth. It is inappropriate to add something at the last minute.
I, I just want to point out that the, the social media policy was added because we discussed it at our work session and rec, requested that Craig have the attorney add it.
Clarification, the social media policy has already been adopted by city council, but we, the, the policy is just being inserted into the ordinance.
We discussed this at the work session?
It was asked at the last work se-
Your honor, we have a public comment.
Yes, Lisa, come on to the podium.
I guess going on Tim's last statement about sixty years and whatever, what just happened in Ottawa County at the commissioner's office, we've never seen anything like that, and they've been around for the same amount of time. They went in, fired the attorneys, fired the, the commissioner, they fired all these people, and nobody could do anything. And, and, and you got to look at that and what's happening, we are in Ottawa County, okay? Those people were under contract, they were there. The, the health department, I mean, that woman was demoted, thank God she is suing, and she should. I, I mean, i- 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 it's frightening to see, especially when you're sitting in another country, watching this happen, going, I, I, I can't believe it. There, there needs to be accountability all the way around. And if you're doing, I mean, nobody's going to agree, and, and yes, frivolous lawsuits are horrible, and they're awful, and they shouldn't happen. We should be adult enough to be able to compromise and have mediation, maybe there's a mediation system that gets thrown in there first before it goes out, where people can sit down a, and, and talk about what's happening. But what happened at that meeting in, in Ottawa County, I mean, I, I said I was number sixty for public comment the last time I went, and I left after two and a half hours. Like I said, because it was, it was in, incredible, uh, on what happened, and I cannot believe, you know, I mean, we're talking ethics, we're talking Open Meetings Act, there is no way they could have done what they did without meeting in private through emails. And if you go on and you look at the FOIA, because people have FOIA'd all their information, they're getting tests. Yeah, I've, I've read them between certain members and stuff, and they weren't even sworn in yet, I don't think it was the very first meeting, how do you do that? You want to talk about ethics, you want to talk about, you know, making your public not trust government? That's exactly what they just threw out there. John Gibbs was not voted in, in this, you know, with the last election, we just had, and then Ottawa County comes in and swoops him up and puts him in? I find that offensive, especially with his background and being a woman, I have a problem with that. And then all of a sudden, he's in in Ottawa County, shocking. So, I'm all about transparency, and I believe there should be responsibility for everyone's actions.
Yes.
If I may respond real quick, uh, just to clarify, the Attorney General of Michigan, Adina Nessel, has, uh, determined that, uh, there was no violation of the Open Meetings Act, uh, prior to these people being, um, sworn in. The board of commissioners being sworn in.
Your honor. Your honor.
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to respond to some of Tim's comments, um, as far as making an ethical ordinance, weaponizing it, I personally feel that the current system is weaponizing the ethics in, in our current charter. Um, this city council has never taken up a complaint, it's always gone to the attorney and to department heads, just like Tim said, and they've made to determine if it was ethical or not. There's been a slew of re, of- There's been a slew of complaints put against several council members up here, and every one of them was frivolous and wasted city attorney time and city money, taxpayer money. Every one of those complaints went to the attorney, it was reviewed by him, and he decided whether it was a frivolous complaint or if it had any teeth to it. And every one of them, he said there was, there was no ethics violations. So to say that an ethics ordinance would weaponize ethics is, is just absurd. I mean, the system we have now is weaponizing our ethics.
Yes.
Craig, is the city council bill, you think it's legal?
Any bills the city for our spin, a city business, we don't pay a retainer. The two complaints that were filed against a couple members was reviewed by the city attorney, and it was determined that was not a city council issue. I would have to look a couple hours at the most, three hundred bucks.
One last thing, Your Honor. If we are going to go ahead and approve the ordinance, it has to be determined the proper procedure for taking disciplinary action. I don't wanna see one of our employees get a criminal conviction because they, they pushed the wrong button on the computer. Right now, that's all it has. It has one determination, it has one person determining, uh, is the judge, the jury, and executioner. He determines what, if there was a violation, and if there, and whether this person can be disciplined and up to and including, uh, determination. No other input from any other department head, and there's no leniency for any violation. Every violation is exactly the same. Every employer I have worked for that has a disciplinary action has varying degrees for disciplinary action, what constitutes each level of, of disciplinary action. So we need to discuss, we should be, discuss that, otherwise, I feel sorry for the future of the city, I really do. It accounts everybody, even the people on the council, on the council, on the board, every single board, every commissioner, every employee, fire department, Department of Public Works, our city treasurer. So before you decide to bring the courts into this, we need to sit down and determine how it's going to be determined. Not one, not one, uh, one line or one, one block fits all.
Yes.
Why isn't work...
Well, the... You're right, we had it on the agenda as a work session, and we discussed all of this, right?
We did not discuss the, the varying levels of dis...
Well, then...
This thing only has one level.
Well, everything is phrased up to, um, so no, I wouldn't say that it has, doesn't have varying levels. It's had discretion, just like Craig has discretion now. But again, the time to discuss this would have been when we had our work session. We tabled this once, we asked for a work session, we had a work session. Were you, were you not prepared for the work session? Do you, are you asking for another work session? I, I wouldn't say regardless of the facts.
So Tim, you are objecting to the, bringing in the court system to this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Why bring, why bring the court? Not necessary to get a criminal conviction. Court, on public record. Again, I think it needs to be further discussed. Table, and the introduction needs to be tabled to discuss the penalty portion of it, not discussed at the work.
So can I ask why you didn't bring it up at the work session?
Because I was hoping that, given my arguments, that this wouldn't go this far.
I mean, it, it did, we had conversation that we were going to put this on an agenda, so that would have been a good time to bring it up.
Regardless, regardless, and now, here's the thing, that's what I'm...
Your Honor, I need to ask Craig.
Yes.
The first, uh, person this will go to is the city attorney, correct? And then if he decides it could, needs to go further, then it would go to the courts.
So, the attorney finds an offense, he can levy a penalty amount up to five hundred dollars. If the person who had the complaint against him wants to appeal that, he can take it to the, to the court. Correct.
Your Honor, that's exactly what it says here. It says the city attorney is empowered to take any one or more of the following actions, and only one of those actions is district court. He can also, uh, invoke a fine, he can also terminate contracts, he can do a lot of other things than to take this to the district court. So what Tim is saying is totally misconstrued, and it, it's not the way it's written.
See, there again, gray area.
It's not a gray area, Tim, it says upon a finding of a violation of any provision of this chapter, the city attorney is empowered to take any or, any one, any one of all these actions or more of the following actions. It does not necessarily say that you are gonna go to district court and be charged in court. That is not what this policy states in the least.
Your Honor.
Yes.
If we, as officials, city of Ferrisburg, and/or employees of the city of Ferrisburg, understand that we are to operate above board and abide by the rules and the regulations, we should not be afraid of anything like this. We should be willing to accept it, this is the standards of our employment, and we move on.
Yes, Rebecca.
Rebecca Hat, P O Box eighty-five, Ferrisburg four nine four oh nine. I'm hoping that members of this council have reviewed this ethic policy ordinance through every line, because what it includes is every one of our volunteer board members. And in this also states that every one of the board members will read this and return their signed copy back to the office, back to the city clerk. With that in mind, a while ago, I did some research, found out that the board policy book that's already on the, that's already in place and was approved under my leadership, only fifty-one percent of the council members and including all of the volunteer board members, only fifty-one percent has been returned. So, including all of our volunteers that give up so much of their time and dedicate so many hours to the city on a yearly basis, what is your plan of action to educate them so they know and understand what is in this ethic ordinance and the consequences if they do do something? The social media policy is listed in there. Social media policy also would affect every one of our volunteer board members, which if you go back and you look at some nasty comments that are out on social media, that could definitely be reprehensible to our volunteers. Because at one time, at one moment, they made a statement on social media, and it's there forever. And the way that this ethic ordinance reads, they will be terminated. Could be up to, it will be the attorney to be judge, jury, and executioner if this volunteer is removed. Now, will the volunteer ever be able to serve in the city public again? I don't know, maybe the council needs to determine what you really want out of this policy. Don't, don't hang any of our wonderful volunteers that we have in the city of Ferrisburg, they do an amazing job.
Thank you. So Craig, I have a question, 'cause Brooks' statement on here, our city attorney, said he made revisions, um, overall, the policy is very broad, his concern on that complaint, blah, blah, blah. So if we, uh, finish discussing it on this introduction, then will it go back to him for further review before you put it back on the agenda for discussion and approval? Or is this the final copy?
Council wants revisions, now's the time to get a consensus of city council to incorporate any revisions.
Okay. So Tim, I hear your concerns, Jerry, I hear what you have to say. I mean, Tim, let us, let us know, y- you were talking about the penalties. So I guess I'm a little confused on what's, you know, if it goes through the proper channels, will, will the penalties can, can and could be that you have concern about that are in here?
What I have concern is that every single, uh, social media, every single ethics issue is all, can all be treated the same by one person. And it's the city attorney that, that makes that decision on, on everything. And I think that's wrong. There needs to be at least, uh, and again, every job that I've been in, there's never one person that makes every decision. He either makes the dec, we have somebody that makes a decision, the city attorney can make, can push it on to, uh, an ethics board that can, that can investigate it further, or send it to city council. This council has in the past addressed every issue that has been brought before. It didn't have to go to the city attorney. It was addressed by the council, and it was discussed, and the city council came to a decision, made a, made a decision. I don't, I believe giving one person that amount of power is wrong. Each item needs to be addressed and say, okay, if you do this, absolute, if you, if you are, uh, if you can take a bribe, that is automatic termination, should be automatic termination. But if you make the wrong, if you hit the wrong button on the computer and you allow a virus on under this guideline, that can, you can be terminated for that. It's up to one person to decide. If he's having a bad day and he doesn't, for some reason doesn't like that person, he's gone, or she. We need, and also, uh, every place I've worked, it has that, uh, disciplinary action has a, a limit on it. It does not, uh, if you violate a rule, you get disciplined, it stays on your record for a year. Then it is removed. So there is not, not accumulation, if you got somebody like me who's worked for the department for, or the city for twenty, twenty years, and I have over the years, if, if, if another person, person makes a mistake, it's not, doesn't dog them for their entire career. So I'm just asking that, that, uh, we take a, a moment to take a look and make a determination. What are these, uh, would take, uh, require just a slap on the wrist, and which one deter, determines, uh, termination?
Okay, so are you saying if there, someone files a complaint, it comes to the city clerk, possibly it should maybe go to Craig first and/or city council before it goes to the city attorney? Is that your suggestion?
No, let, let, uh, let the, uh, city attorney determine whether it's a violation, going according to the, the state laws, rules and regulations there. That's the way it is in every place.
Tim, don't you think the, the city attorney would ensure that the courts wasn't necessarily the, the last thing that he could reprimand somebody for, with, I guess? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that the city attorney has been fair in the matters in the past, and, um, I don't think he's necessarily gonna send everybody to the court because they, um, allowed a virus on the city website or, or whatever, you know? I think there's other ways he would deal with that action. I think there's other ways he would deal with that action other than district court. And there's other descriptions of other actions he could take other than district court. That's not his only option. And I think that would be his last option unless it was something very drastic.
Your honor. I agree with Jerry. If you look at that section, complaint procedure, section thirty-two point ninety-one, and read on down through all those paragraphs, taking it to court is like the last resort. This is not gonna be, people in, in the city, council members, board members, commission members, and city employees are not gonna be subject to court action right off the bat. This is gonna go through a, a series of actions and reviews before it goes to court. And I don't think anybody who is any ethical bone in their body has anything to fear from this, 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 I'm sorry, ordinance. Forgot my words.
Your honor.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Kate. Additionally, I think everyone has been able to voice, this body has been able to voice their opinions. I move to call the question and request a roll call vote.
We're not approving it.
Yes, we are.
Are we tonight?
No.
Oh, darn it, I did it again.
You did it again.
Okay.
I have one question.
Oh.
Your honor.
All right.
I don't ever know. Tim, would, would you feel more comfortable with this ordinance if we had an ethics committee? I mean, I wouldn't oppose to an ethics committee. But I, I think that the city attorney should still be part of that because he knows the laws and the, and the ethics and the charter better than anybody. But, you know, if you wanted to go in front of an ethics committee and let them decide what the disciplinary action, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I have, I have expressed my views on this, and I'm, I'm, I'm spinning my wheels here. Nobody's listening to what I have to say, so I'm, I'm not going to, we'll just go on to the next agenda item.
Okay, let's move on. Seven E. Discussion and take action if appropriate, accept a visionary plan as a guide for recommendations the city may take in the future. Craig?
Discussed by city council, and at that time, they asked to have a table for a work session. At the last meeting, we had a work session on it. Chairman John Reifel, Chamber Representative Lucid Butler was here to answer any questions about the, the report. After that, that discussion, it was indicated that city council was ready to put the, the city council agenda for their consideration.
Yes.
I move that we accept the EDC task force, task force report of December seventh with the following revision, going to page three. Recommendations to city council for economic development. Number one, I recommend, or I move that we put a dot, period after M dot funding, and then pick up after the next sentence. This should have immediate attention. Once again, after M dot funding and number one, insert a period, and then pick up the next sentence, which starts with this should have immediate attention.
Your honor, I agree with that.
Your honor, I would support that.
Okay. So we're gonna strike out, thanks to former mayor Rebecca Hop's campaign of outreach to Michigan Municipal League, MDOT, Grand Region Bridge Commission, US DOT, and state politicians. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a support? Bill, did you support it? Okay. Further discussion?
I support it.
Oh, Debbie supported it? Okay. Motion support, further discussion with the amendment to page three, recommendations number one. Further discussion? Yes. Rebecca, you wanna come on up to the podium?
Rebecca Hop, PO Box eighty-five, Ferrisburg four nine four oh nine. I understand that some of you may have a personal grievance against me. I understand that. But if you ask, my comments are directed towards the mayor, so I am not allowed to ask, ask questions directly to the city manager. But if one of you would ask the city manager if there's anyone else besides Mayor Blais, council member Twah, myself, and also the city manager who was involved, that worked diligently, hours and hours, to get this bridge approved by MDOT. So now you're taking, I'm not looking for the accolades. I know that I did it. There's a lot of people around the state that know what I did and what Mr. Bozinger and I did to get this bridge funded. But by choosing to do this after council member Sias voted unanimously at the last task force meeting, never once asked a question. Neither did Mr. Jonas, never once asked a question for clarification. And so now it's coming before council multiple times. And each time, it, you, not even taking in the whole scope of everything. No one here has asked me questions, how we got the bridge done, how many conversations I've had, how many trips I took to Lansing, took days off from work to talk to people. It's pretty impressive that we were able to get it done, and that saved the city thousands and thousands and millions of dollars that we didn't have to try to budget for, we didn't have to ask for a millage.
Rebecca? I have no qualms against you personally, you know that.
Sure, certainly.
But the key word you kept saying was "we." We, we, we. And I think that's the way this report ought to read. That no single person should be singled out for actions. It should be "we."
Correct. And...
That's my only...
Mr. Reifel had worked with me, asked me questions because he was receiving conflicting information from members of the community. And he worked with me, and I gave him information. He's the one that drafted this up. He's the one that wrote it, however he wrote it.
I'd like to address something. This is Hop. First of all, you, you keep attacking me for not voting against this in, in the, in the task force meeting. This report is a consensus. There's several things in here I don't personally agree with, but it was a consensus vote. We have to work together, and that's why I did not oppose this vote. It has nothing to do with every little sentence in here. I can point out several things in here I don't really think is the right way to go. But I can't hold up a whole task force just for my one or two...
But that was the opportunity during that meeting, because there was a lot of discussion. I attended that meeting to answer questions. But, but you chose not to air any grievance. You chose not to ask clarification or to speak on any specific points.
I wrote two emails to the head of the task force, well, to the whole task force, actually.
And it results around this one statement that you're now removing from the statement.
I wrote two emails. I was shut down each time, so I let it lay. And I said it will go to council, they will make their decision.
In which they have, and they have spoken tonight.
They have, and they've spoken. And that, so why am I the guilty party? And another thing, you flat out lied about my attendance last month. I have my attendance record here, and I was attended one hundred percent of the meetings. I was late to one meeting.
Twenty-one minutes.
Twenty-one minutes late to a meeting.
You arrived with only twenty-one minutes left of the meeting.
Okay, but ninety-eight percent of the other meetings, I was on time. I was on time to ninety-eight percent of the other meetings, and I missed not one meeting. And you told everybody I missed fifty-one percent of the meetings.
No.
That was your exact words.
Not that you, you only, you attended less than fifty percent because council member Kate was with, was at the beginning of the meetings. It's your interpretation of my statement.
That's not the way you stated it. You said, "I missed fifty-one percent of my meetings." That's the way you stated it, and that's the way you wanted it to be perceived by the public, that I was absent for fifty-one percent of the meetings. You didn't say that I came in fifty percent of the way through the task force, and that's why I missed fifty percent of the meetings. Yeah, I came into it with only eight months left, and I made a meeting every month.
This is exactly what I read at the last council meeting, council member Sias.
Read it.
Last fall, council member, I'm a chairman, and council member Sias wrote emails. Oh, let me see. Just a minute, I have to find the right spot on here. However, council member Kate, council member Kate was abruptly replaced by council member Sias. Council member Sias attended less than fifty percent of the meetings. In fact, one meeting, he was only present for twenty-one minutes.
And how, how does that sound to you? How does that sound to the public?
Actually, the actual statement was fifty percent of the overall task force meeting.
Because my statement before was that you replaced council member Kate, who had served on this commission as a, as a resident, as a volunteer, before he was even elected to council.
I'm sorry, but I just feel you used a sneaky tactic to try to smear my name.
I, I always deal with facts, and I'm always objective.
You stated to the public, "I missed fifty-one percent of my meetings," and that's the way they took it.
Your honor.
Very untrue.
Your honor, is this discussion germane to the motion on the floor?
Okay. All right, further discussion. Do we wanna do a roll call or just, all right, let's do a roll call vote. This is to approve the visionary plan with the amendment of recommendations, page three, number one.
Council member O'Donnell?
No.
Council member Carlson?
Yes.
Council member Montgomery? Council member Sias? Council member Murdoch?
Yes.
Council member Kate? Mayor Blais?
No.
No. Motion carried. Okay, moving on. Seven F. Discussion, take action if appropriate, schedule work session as a regular agenda item on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Looks like we have a couple of things on here. Community energy plan and term limits. Jerry, you brought that up. Was there a specific item under term limits you wanted to discuss? Like for council or boards or committees, or what were you thinking?
Yeah, that's exactly the way that it's worked in the charter.
You gotta press the Greg every time.
Exactly the way it's worded in the charter. It's pretty broad, and it leaves open the possibility for somebody to serve their term, be out of politics for a year, and then restart their term over. And I don't think that's what the people intended when they wrote this ordinance. I think people intended when they wrote this ordinance for a council member to do their term, and that would be it, they'd move on. I don't, and I think it should be corrected.
Craig, what does it say in there? Do you recall? I think it's... Yeah, we'll gather some for that. Any, anything else, anything else you guys wanna add to the work session?
Your honor.
Yes.
I'm a little concerned with Mayor Pro Tim O'Donnell's comments about law enforcement and ambulance cover, coverage in the area. If there's anything that we could do potentially as a city to help with that.
Sign up now.
Craig?
I can talk to the fire chief and Sergeant McCullar.
It's not a pay issue?
No.
For the fire...
Yes.
Law enforcement, the sheriff's department, they're working to recruit people the best they can. I haven't heard anything from Sergeant McCullar about not having enough coverage in the city at this time, but I'll review that with him.
Again, it's a state, it's a state issue. State has come up with additional requirements, gonna make it harder to...
Your honor.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Donnell laid out the situation with the fire department extremely well. How about with the sheriff's department? Is city Ferrisburg and Spring Lake, is that a coveted position within the sheriff's department? And if it isn't, is that something that, anything that we could do to make it more attractive, where people want to come here? I realize that they're unionized.
Yes.
So it's not like we can give them an extra poke or something, but... All right, very good.
Okay, anything else for work session? All right, let's move on. G. Consideration for adjournment, close session, to consider purchase of, lease of real property prior to obtaining an option to purchase. Roll call or motion, I guess?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion support for the discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
Craig, why do we have to go to the closed session? Open meeting that says we may go to, I would like to, the public be...
The closed session is so we can talk to city council before it goes public on what the city plans to do. Once there's a plan put together, it will be brought to... Once there's a plan put together, it will be brought to city council for formal action.
Further dis... Further discussion?
No, none.
Uh, roll call, please.
Council member O'Donnell?
No.
Council member Carlson?
Yes.
Council member Montgomery?
Yes.
Council member Sias?
Yes.
Council member Murdock?
Yes.
Council member Kate?
Yes.
Council member, or Mayor Blase?
Yes.
Thanks, Gordon. I got a quick round of the restroom.
Recession?
Will we take the recess?
Your honor?
Yeah, we're going into the closed session.
That says we recesses?
Yeah, we can...
Can we go?
Take a five-minute recess?